Tonight, before we begin, I'd like to ask Matt Marietta to lead us in our invocation.
Good evening. Please join me in prayer. Dear God, I want to thank you for bringing us all together tonight. I thank you for this wonderful city and all the blessings that we have every day. And I pray that you guide the decision-makers as they decide policy for the city and continue to set its direction. I pray that you guide our conversation and guide our actions to bring you glory. In Jesus's name I pray. Amen.
Good evening. I'd like to call the regular meeting of Milton City Council for March 2, 2020 to order. Seems strange still to say 2020. The city's, I remember when I was a little kid thinking, one day it's going to be 2020. And I'm like, but that's forever. That's like 50 years from now. The city strongly recommends that you review tonight's agenda carefully. And if you wish to speak on any item on the agenda, please bring your comment cards to the clerk as soon as possible. While Milton rules allow a speaker to turn in their comment card up until the clerk calls the agenda item, once the agenda item is called, no more comment cards can be accepted. So if you do have some public comment, the cards are back there in the yellow and our clerk is up here on to my right. And again, I want to welcome everybody here tonight. And Sudi, if you would please call the next item, the approval of the agenda.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call roll for the March 2, 2020, regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Those attending the meeting who would like to make a public comment, you're required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on the item. Your comment card must be presented to the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. All speakers, please identify yourself by name, address, and organization before beginning your comment. If you are representing an organization, an affidavit is required stating that you have the authority to speak on behalf of that organization. Please review tonight's agenda. And if you would like to make a comment, please bring your comment card to me now. Demonstration of any sort within this chamber is prohibited. Please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Here.
Councilmember Peyton Jameson.
Here.
Councilmember Laura Bentley.
Here.
Councilmember Carol Cookerly.
Here.
Councilmember Rick Moritz.
Here.
For the record, council members Joe Longoria and Paul Moore are absent. Would everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Sudi, if you'd please now call the approval of the agenda.
Next item is approval of the meeting agenda, agenda item number 20058.
Staff would like to alter the agenda on the zoning portion to remove items number two through 10. Is that correct? Okay. So if, do I have any others? If not, I'll open up for motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda with the removal of items two through 10.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Bentley with a second from Councilmember Cookerly with the changes as read into the record with the removal of zoning items number two through 10. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Mr. Mayor, just for purposes of the record, just wanted to identify those will be returning to the council by way of a subsequent legal ad that will be run.
Okay, all right, thank you. We're just basically deferring them. Next item is a public comment, general public comment. Do we have any general public comments?
We do not have any general.
Okay, well then I'll, we'll move on and save everybody my, their time. If we can move on to the consent agenda, Sudi, if you will, please read those items.
First item is approval of the January 6, 2020, regular city council meeting minutes, agenda item number 20059. Next is approval of the January 22, 2020, regular city council meeting minutes, agenda item number 20060. Next is approval of the February 3, 2020, regular city council meeting minutes, agenda item number 20061. Next is approval of a professional services agreement between the City of Milton and CPS HR Consulting for an employee engagement survey, agenda item number 20062. Fifth is approval of a professional services agreement between the City of Milton and All Termite and Pest Control LLC Doing Business As All Exterminating to provide pest, termite, and rodent control services, agenda item number 20063. Next, approval of a construction services agreement between the City of Milton and American Property Restoration, Inc. for the demolition and general property cleanup of debris left by homeowner of the structure located at 15270 Hopewell Road, agenda item number 20064. Our seventh and final consent agenda item is approval of subdivision plats and revisions. This is by Louis Renaud, land lot 184, 16530, Hopewell Road, minor plat. Create three lots, 3.0 total acres, one lot per acre. This is agenda item number 20065.
Okay, I'm going to open up for a motion on the consent agenda. Councilmember Bentley.
Mayor, I'd like to ask if the council would allow us to discuss item number seven, the subdivision of Hopewell, the minor plat subdivision, so to remove it from the consent agendas for discussion?
So procedure-wise, we just make a motion to consent agenda for the other items?
Just to be moved to the, I guess that would be just the new business.
So we do it under the same motion, approve the agenda minus that and moving that item to new business?
That would be perfectly in order too, but you all have already approved the agenda, have you not?
No.
No, this is the consent agenda.
Consent agenda.
But you're right, but you're right. We'd have to change the agenda for that, don't we?
Correct. You just need to go ahead and make a motion and move that to the new business item and then, once that's done, then go ahead and approve the consent agenda.
Okay, I'll second that when you do it.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda and move item number seven to new business?
That's, that's fine.
So approving the consent agenda without item number seven and moving that to new business?
Do you want me to say again?
That's good, all right.
Then I second that.
Okay, I have a motion for Councilmember Bentley and a second from Councilmember Cookerly to approve the consent agenda with all except item number seven, which will be moved into new, new business. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Okay, let's move on to reports and presentations. Sudi, if you'd please call the first item.
First item is recognition of graduating CERT team, Chief Robert Edgar.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. First starting in California with the LA Fire Department in 1985, the Community Emergency Response Team, or CERT, has grown to a vital component of emergency response throughout the country. CERT is made up of local volunteers who assist in the community's response to a disaster. Think of it as neighbor helping neighbor. According to FEMA, over 600,000 people have received CERT training since its inception in 1985. Tonight, we will introduce our third City of Milton CERT team, which brings our total number of certified citizens to 30. I would like to introduce Battalion Chief Richard Bushman, our team coordinator. Chief Bushman, and our instructors, Chris Say, Andrew Kennedy, and Jeff Jones. And I'm going to allow Chris Say to say a few words. And then we will hand out the certificates. Just a few.
The CERT team here in Milton is unique. You can look up CERT and see what FEMA has to say about it. But here in Milton, we're blessed to be, to have a lot of professionals who can share their experience and their knowledge with us to enhance our team. Basically, CERT here in Milton, when I, when people ask me, what is CERT? It's education for the community, for them to help, help us help them. And that's what CERT's all about. I'll read the names of the new members. And if you will, come up here, please. Gloria DeVincensi. Amy Donnelly. Sundok Gonison. Evelyn Herring. Always. Clint Jacob. Luann Levin. Ashley Logan. Michelle Lopez. Jim and Lisa Locker. Dale and Sally Stabler. And these are your new CERT team members. Just to let y'all know, one of the things that CERT does is share with the community. And as you've probably heard, there's a virus going around. Something small hit the media. One of our CERT members, Sundok, has already provided a community seminar. He works for the CDC, has firsthand knowledge. So he, in his community, represented CERT by having a seminar about the coronavirus, what to do, how serious it is, and everything. So I appreciate that. You're already doing what we, what we're planning to do. So thank you.
You want the council to stand up, to stand here?
Yeah. Yeah, guys.
I want my neighbors in front of me. Thank you. We might hear gunshots in the morning.
I'm going to have to back up. Or don't. Or don't.
Is this ironic or not that as far as Barmy gets a call right there in the chair? Can I say a couple of words?
Seven o'clock, straight up.
Let me just say a couple of words too. Guys, I just want to. I want to just thank you all. I always say, this is kind of a special moment. I always say that we're so fortunate in Milton, our city's so great because of our citizens that volunteer and care enough to get involved and help out. But this is kind of a, a something. I always, also always talk about our folks in uniform and our public safety and how special they are and how lucky we are. So anyways, this kind of gets, reaches both items. So just want to thank you and appreciate everything you do and anything we can do to support you. We're there for you, so thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Sudi, if you would please sound the next presentation item.
Next item is discussion of former Milton Country Club property buffers, Mr. Parag Agarwal.
Just want to make sure we have a right presentation. Hi, I'm Parag Agarwal, City's Community Development Director. Today, I also have with me our Principal Planner, Michelle McIntosh-Ross, and Conservation Project Manager, Teresa Stickles. Today, we are here in front of you to discuss the issue of property buffers at the former Milton Country Club property. The city has been approached by a couple of property owners who would like to enhance the buffers between the, between their homes and the proposed public space. I know this issue came up when we were working on the city's master plan, and there was also a lot of discussion at that time. But now, since the city staff is working very diligently to open the park as soon as possible for the Milton residents to enjoy, we do want to get some feedback from the city council members. The goal of this presentation is not to get a final vote from the city council. We have not discussed this with the community members, but we do just want to get some feedback from the city council. So in today's presentation, I will be starting with the goals and objectives of this exercise. Why are we here? What's the goal of this process? Then we will be talking about the recommendations of the former Milton Country Club master plan. As you know, the city council adopted the master plan in August of last year. There was a lot of discussion at that time. So Michelle will be talking about the recommendations that came out from the master plan about the buffer requirements. Then we also have some options in front of you. We have four options in front of you that will basically achieve the goals and objectives of this exercise. And Teresa will be talking to you about those options. And we also have one slide of analysis. What are the positives and negatives of each option? Again, some feedback, no vote. Starting with the goal, the goal, as I mentioned, the goal is basically to enhance the natural buffer between the private properties and the proposed public green space. The objectives are, number one, to create a visual and a physical separation between the green space and the surrounding properties. Number second, as I just mentioned, the city council adopted the master plan in August of last year. So we do want to implement the recommendations that came out of the former Milton Country Club master plan. Number third, enhance the City of Milton's tree canopy. As we know, the City of Milton is working to update the city's tree preservation ordinance. We want to enhance the city's tree canopy. There's a goal of no net loss. So in this case, we see this to be a great opportunity in which we can also enhance the tree canopy. And number four is the most important, is basically to conserve the green space. So again, the master plan was adopted in 2019, and as Michelle just mentioned, thousands of people participated in the planning process. And Michelle will just touch about, talk to you more about the recommendations that came out of the master plan for the buffer requirements.
Okay, thank you. So hopefully, you know, this is all familiar to you. We adopted this plan of August of 2019. And as you can see from these pictures, these, you know, were not anomalies. This is how the, the community process went. We had lots of meetings and lots of people showed up. It was a very robust community input process. Thousands of comments, surveys, dozens of community meetings, and we had hundreds of, hundreds of attendees. And with all of that input, we, wrongly, we got a list of guiding principles from that session. So some of the guiding principles that I'm going to highlight pertains to the exercise we're doing today. For the A, it was to promote safety and mitigate impacts to adjacent neighbors. So two of them in that section, A1, was to define and/or screen residential properties. So hence, we're talking about discussions and possible plantings and so on. For A2, it was to limit the trails in direct proximity to the residential property. So we want to have the trails as far enough away from private property as possible. Also, to create and restore nature throughout the passive preserve, as Prague mentioned, with our tree canopy and so on, we would want to increase that in this area. C1 talks about incorporate, incorporate native plantings to restore the natural habitat areas. So planting trees and buffers, planting vegetated buffers would help with those. So those are some highlights. And Teresa will continue.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As Prague said, adjoining property owners have expressed an interest in greater buffers between their private property and what has been purchased by the city with green space bond funds for the purpose of land conservation. To address these concerns, we've come up with some options to present to you tonight. The first one, the exclusive right of entry for the purpose of planting and maintaining vegetative buffer. This option allows neighbors special rights to come onto specified city property to beautify and maintain some landscaping. The city could prepare landscape plans for the neighbors interested in this option or approve one for them to install. The second, easement for the purpose of planting and maintaining a vegetative buffer. This would be very similar to the right of entry, except that this would be recorded on the deed. Any option where the adjoining property owners create the vegetative buffers, which would be options one and two, would require city approval of the landscaping details. And that's mainly just to coordinate with the tree species list. And also maybe take advantage of the arborist knowledge to add to the. The next option is implementing the buffer options in the master plan, which Michelle had spoken about the master plan. The approved master plan discusses, discusses vegetative park perimeter options that include three types of vegetation buffers. The first was evergreen trees and shrubs. The second was shade trees, evergreen trees and shrubs. And the third, you can probably see where I'm going with this, berms, shade trees, evergreen trees, and shrubs. trees and shrubs. The final option is a fee simple sale, and this would be a legal conveyance of city-owned green space property to the adjoining property owner. Legal has told us that this is allowed under OCGA 36-37-6, which allows the governing body of any municipal corporation to sell and convey parcels of narrow strips of land so shaped and so small as to be incapable of being independently used as zoned, where such conveyances facilitate the enjoyment of the highest and best use of the abutting owner's property without having to do an auction or sealed bid process. All adjoining homeowners shall be notified and shall have the opportunity to purchase said property under such terms and conditions as set out by the ordinance. So there's some important preconditions to the use of this state statute, and this is directly from Ken, so this should sound familiar to you, Ken. The city would first have to adopt an ordinance with terms and conditions for selling property of this nature. Secondly, all adjoining property owners would need to be notified of the opportunity to purchase green space. Third, the city will have to identify parcels of narrow strips of land that are incapable of being independently developed adjoining each lot, which would require a survey. Fourth, these small subdivided parcels will have to be recorded as plats. And fifth, then there would be a contract, a sale and a closing. So in addition, it should be noted that this option requires the city to create substandard parcels or non-conforming lots that the city would not otherwise create. It is also important to note that the money that comes from the sale would go back into the green space bond so that it would be made whole, which would require determining a price that would accomplish this. So just a quick recap. In options one and two, the city would still own the land, but the adjoining property owner bears the cost of planting a vegetative buffer. In option three, the city still owns the land, but the city bears the cost for planting the vegetative buffer. In option four, the city no longer owns the property, and the adjoining property owners can do whatever they like with the property that is allowed by ordinance. So now, a brief analysis of the options. Right of entry, this option meets all the goals and objectives and is likely to be the easiest and the option that incurs the least cost to the city. There would likely be some sort of, I suppose, legal document that could be used to describe the parameters of the property that each property owner is allowed to... And this was Ken's sort of idea, so he could flesh it out if need be. But it would not be recorded with the deed. With an easement, this option meets all the goals and objectives in much the same way as the right of entry option, but each easement would require more cost and effort recording the easement instrument. Implementing the buffer options, this option meets all the goals and objectives. The approved master plan offered the three options I mentioned earlier, the different trees and the berm. This has the advantage of already being part of the approved plan, which is, as Michelle mentioned, came about after a long planning process with a great deal of public input. This option would require funding to be identified for this purpose, as it is not included in any of the phasing. And the right of entry and easement options could also utilize the planning examples from the approved master plan. The fee simple sale. During the discussion of trail location, some property owners requested that trails be sited as far away from private property as possible. So this option has the disadvantage of making the trails closer to private property. Additionally, it reduces the amount of green space the city has conserved at this location. A benefit of this option is that property owners have the flexibility on what buffer, if any, they choose to create. Additionally, we have heard from two property owners that they would like to acquire additional property. So as Prag said, not expecting a vote or anything tonight, we just wanted to put this out there for you to think about. You're welcome to do whatever you'd like to do, but we would like to offer our staff recommendations. In considering the goals and objectives, we recommend that the city either grant exclusive right of entry to adjoining property owners for the purpose of planting and maintaining a vegetation buffer, or implement the buffer options from the approved FMCC master plan. The right of entry meets both the goals and objectives and should prove to be the least costly option. Implementation of the buffer option meets the goals and objectives, but as they are not included in the phases, it would require a funding source.
Okay. Any questions? Laura?
Before you... Teresa, just real quick. So can you explain how a buffer, selling the buffer, will bring the trail closer to the private property? Can you give me an example? I don't understand.
Well, do you understand that's yours? Michelle is gonna reply to this. So when we started to do the analysis, so we looked at the trails and the distance between the parcel lines. And so if property owners buy additional property, it's gonna bring their property line closer to the trail.
Oh, okay.
But the... I'm sorry.
No, that's...
Okay. But the buffer has to be, I mean, it has to be utilized as a buffer. You can't put a volleyball net on that, right?
Well, if it's... It depends on how it's conveyed. If it's a sale, then they own it. If it's an easement, then we have parameters on it, I guess.
Well, I mean, if it's a sale, obviously, they own the fee. We'd receive compensation for the property, and we'd have to put deed restrictions in it with respect to what you could do on the property. But of course, the more deed restrictions in it, the more, or excuse me, the less they're gonna wanna pay for it, as you might expect, so...
But I think the expectation would be, and certainly from the people who have referenced, the expectation is they want it to be a buffer. So, I mean, that kinda sounds interesting, because that money would go back into the green space bond. I mean, it's going to be dead space anyway, and we would like for it to be populated with landscape, right?
I've got different... I mean, I've got different thoughts on that. On the one hand, once somebody else owns it, of course, our ability to then compel the nature of the buffer is somewhat diminished. I mean, because at that point, they own it, as opposed to whether an easement or right of entry, it's still our property, and we are ultimately in control of the integrity of that buffer. But your point's not wrong. You're spot on. It's just a matter of where the priorities are of the city. That's the bottom line.
Could we, you know, and obviously, each option, you know, has its different merits and pros and cons, and every property is, was different, too. So I guess it's safe to say we could do any or all of these. We have the option to do that in different circumstances. Is that, you know, I'd like to kind of leave that open so that, you know, because there may be some, you know, properties that are different than other, that obviously it has to be a benefit for the city and the citizens, and also a fair, you know, a fair process and all that, too.
Mayor, I mean, for example, I think cleaner, the better. So I don't think we should say, oh, one property owner can buy it and the other one can't. I think we should just make one decision and just move on. That's my two cents.
And you get it. I mean, I understand, but this goes without saying, but basically what you were provided was a continuum, a continuum of the, sort of, the least invasive approach, the right of entry. That's the one where the citizens would just have sort of a right to come on the property outside of normal park hours. Presumably, they would come in to maintain a buffer we otherwise had planted. It's the least significant sort of property interest all the way to then fee, which is where they own it, so, and everything in between.
Laura?
And did you say that the exclusive right of entry was something that citizens had come to us and asked if that was... Okay, this is something...
So basically, we heard from two property owners, and both the two property owners were interested in buying the properties. The first option, basically, we were discussing it with our legal department, and we were talking about the easements and that sort of a thing. And the legal department basically mentioned, instead of having an easement, the first option could be this exclusive right of entry.
And on this exclusive right of entry, you can plant trees only?
Yes.
No fencing?
Only for vegetation. And again, as Teresa was saying, we can also work with our landscape architects and our city arborists to basically make sure what type of plantings go in there to meet the recommendations of the master plan.
On the last option with the sale, it sounds like you were trying to put some parameters to flesh out where, so it couldn't be all adjoining properties could be for sale. Is that correct?
So again, as Teresa was saying, once you open this option, you have to give this option to all the neighboring property owners. And based on the state law, we do have a language in place which came from the legal department that basically shows under which criteria you can set up.
Does that mean that for that, for that instance, the whole subdivision, any properties along, all those, everyone would have it, if we exercised that option, everybody would have a chance to purchase parcel? Or are you gonna put a definition on what makes sense?
I will ask...
Let me try to answer that one. So the mayor asked if we could do any or all of these options, and I stand by what I said. I think that, I mean, I think we have the right to use any or all of them, although I'm persuaded, at least optically, by the notion that it's sort of an in for a penny, in for a pound. We need to make it available for everybody if we're gonna do it for one. But we do have the right to make use of this property, however you, as the policymakers, believe we should. So if you think a right of entry makes sense here, and an easement makes sense here, and perhaps even a subdivided parcel sale makes sense here, I do think legally you could do that. I don't think we're gonna get in trouble from a legal perspective. So I'm giving, I'm offering up all the options at your disposal. You've heard from your capable staff. You all just need to sort of think now about what makes the most sense, thinking about considerations like what you're thinking about.
Carol, did you have...
Yeah, my last question is, does it have to be manicured, or can people just let it sort of grow up au naturel?
So our goal is that it should not be manicured.
Okay.
It will be a natural buffer.
Okay.
It's not a golf course sort of a thing. It's a natural buffer, more trees.
Less of a headache for everybody.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, that's a good comment, because I'm looking at the pictures, wondering how much we can accomplish by, you know, having a buffer in which it's not mowed and that the saplings can go ahead and come up that are native. Because I know we've continued to mow, and we're not letting it become green space, right?
Well, Robert, is Robert still here? Did you want to actually address how we were shifting the mowing? That's... I'm sorry, I was gonna, I was gonna say this, but you're the one that's...
Good evening. Yeah, prior to my getting here, last growing season, I think those fairways were mowed every 10 days. I know, we're gonna back off on that this next growing season. Save, obviously, that money, but we do have to provide some mowing out there, but it's certainly not gonna be to the level that we got now. It's probably gonna be significantly less. We need to grow those to be pastures, or, sorry, meadows.
Meadows, yeah.
And I think you were talking about mowing really on either side of the trails, but allowing nature to work its magic on much of the rest of it.
Yeah, I'll kind of emphasize that a little bit. The trail itself, obviously, we gotta keep it manicured and a lot more stringent mowing along the swath of the trail. But the fairways themselves, yeah, we're gonna back off on the mowing.
Okay. Laura, do you have a question?
One last question. Just, you know, I think offering the buffers, I think we talked about doing that. So it seems like that's the first thing we have to do if we have to pass an ordinance, and then offer that to everyone. And then, I'm all for the exclusive right of entry, too, so I don't, I don't know how... That's a hybrid answer. Sorry.
All right. So I know you need, I don't know how much tighter direction staff would need. Steve, you got any?
It's a difficult question to answer. I realize that as we're going through this. There are unique parcels there. We could open it up to fee simple to everybody. Chances are, you're probably only gonna get a handful of takers on that, and a lot of those takers probably have unique circumstances that is creating the desire to wanna, to acquire that property. We could explore, I could get you more information on what opening it up to everybody looks like. And then we could easily offer it to some, and then see how that shakes out, and then offer the exclusive right for those that don't take it possibly. Does that sound reasonable? So that could be an option to go. The only issue with, once you, once you convey certain properties fee simple over without any sort of restriction on it, you could just end up with some fences that jut out into the, that would jut out, and if you let the others just grow, you'd have fences in some areas and just not in others. But I don't see any other ramifications besides that.
But I guess, what you were saying, Ken was saying, we could have stipulations on that, too.
We could. Let me offer up one option, though, on this, because once you sell property, you're never getting it back. What would be the council's thought about maybe trying some of these incremental approaches and seeing if we hit a sweet spot as far as maybe, you know, the right of entry or the easement? I mean, even the easement, a recorded easement, would still give property owners a significant amount of say on what goes on on that property. But once you sell it and fee, I mean, you're done. You're never getting that back, and I just, I don't want us to have buyer's remorse. I guess seller's remorse.
What width are we talking about?
Good questions.
Fifty feet? Hundred feet? Two hundred feet?
That's fair.
Yeah, it's all case by case.
Yeah.
Fair.
You know, again, I just like that to have some flexibility. Go ahead.
No, I was kinda going on what Ken was saying. Let's just start at the right of entry, and let's just go from there. You know, it's cheap, it doesn't cost the taxpayers as much, as much money, and I think it still serves a purpose of creating the buffer.
I think we should be open-minded about options for different people.
Well, again, I just think we're getting a presentation tonight and all that, I don't know that we're in a position to make a decision right now. So I think everybody probably wanna digest it, too, and think about it. Laura?
And if we do the right of entry, so then we would have conditions that would release the city from, you know, dying trees and things. I mean, if people planted on the public property, are we held responsible for what they plant?
Well, if it's a right of entry, we could condition it however we choose to condition it, as much or as little. My vision, though, for right of entry would be, again, subject to the city or the city staff saying otherwise, is the right of entry is the most tenuous form of sort of right to get on the property. So it would literally be managed, owned, planted by the city. We would be in control. The adjacent property would have the right to come in, maintain, maybe add additional beautification if they wanted to, and all that could be fleshed out in the agreement. Every bit of that.
So the objective is for them to plant that area, not the city?
Then we could make that the right and the right of entry as well, and that would be the very tool that we use.
Okay. And just one last question. I think, Teresa, you'd said in, with that option, you could, you would actually be involved with what type of plantings and location of the plantings.
Well, our arborist and our landscape architect, not me. You wouldn't want me to do it. But yes, the city could lend that expertise, and again, we'd probably want to approve any landscape being planned, because we wouldn't wanna see a whole bunch of Bradford pears planted down along the golf course, you know?
Good.
I just have one question, Mayor, to Ken while he's next to me. So if we were to go towards the exclusive right of entry, are we covered on, do we have the same restrictions as if we were to deal with a fee simple, restrictions as they relate to how much area we could give? Could we possibly have bestowed more flexibility to the adjacent property owners under the exclusive right of entry as opposed to fee simple, which would have to be an unusable piece?
Right. So it's a good question. So the fee simple is, to me, the most legally precarious, because once you start talking about a city or any government selling property, a lot more legal restrictions kick in. The right of entry, you have almost unlimited options, more, varied, greater distances, less, they could even have to renew every year. It's just a contract, and we can draft a contract however we need to draft a contract.
That might be an interesting, just an interesting choice, because with that more flexibility, some of those neighboring homes might be able to gain access to more property. If they're able to plant up those properties, they'll be able to possibly create a larger buffer than if we were to convey the property fee simple. Just a thought.
I agree. All right. Anything else? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we don't have any items under first presentation, so for a public hearing, so we'll move on to zoning. So if you'll please read the zoning rules and sound the first item.
At the second regularly scheduled meeting of the month, Mayor and City Council consider a zoning agenda. These items include rezoning petitions, modifications of zoning, use permits, and associated concurrent variances, in addition to ordinances, resolutions, and text amendments. I would like to acquaint you with the rules and procedures for the zoning item. The applicant and all those speaking in support of an application will be allowed a total of 10 minutes to present the petition. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards were received by the city clerk department prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. If you are speaking on behalf of a group or organization, an affidavit must accompany your public comment card. Before beginning your comment, please identify yourself by name and address. We have one zoning item this evening. Consideration of ZM 20-02 VC 20... Consideration of ZM 20-02, VC 20-02, at 15260 Hopewell Road by Chris Sedgwick, to revise conditions 2A, 3A, 3G, and to request to delete conditions 3B and 3C, H historic, RZ 12-15, to construct additional parking on the site. Concurrent variance to section 642455, to allow application for a certificate of appropriateness to be considered by the Design Review Board instead of the Historic Preservation Commission. Agenda item number 2003, first presentation was heard at the February 19th, 2020 City Council Meeting. Mr. Parag Agarwal.
Hi, I'm Parag Agarwal, City's Community Development Director. Today I also have with me our zoning manager, Robin McDonald. Robin has served as the project manager for this case, and she is also the primary author of our staff report. Today we are here to present you a zoning modification, number ZM 20-02. Along with the zoning modification application, we also have one concurrent variance, that is VC 20-02. The property is located at 15260 Hopewell Road. As Sudi just mentioned, the applicant is requesting a zoning modification to construct a parking lot adjacent to existing general store and a concurrent variance regarding the review of the Historic Preservation Commission. Talking about the location, this is the Hopewell Road. This is Thompson Road over here. The applicant of this property is Chris Sedgwick, and this, the subject site, the subject zoning site is marked by this red outline. So this parcel is split zoned. A parcel, a part of this parcel is zoned as AG1. The red part is zoned as historic called H zoning. There's existing structure on this site, and it's currently unoccupied. As I mentioned, this, this parcel is split zoned. The red part, which is zoned as H, has .52 acres. It's zoned as historic. That was approved by the City Council in February of 2013. The structure on this property was designated as historic by the city on August 20th, 2012. A background, it has, this property has a long background because it was designated as historic, all good story. The structure was constructed on this property in 1950s as a general store with gas pumps. As you can see in this picture over here, it was known in the community as the Hardeman Country Store. The gas pumps, which you can see in the front of this picture, were removed in 2006. So this is the site plan. There was a single family home on the AG1 part of this property that was demolished. So you can see the red footprint on this site plan. So we have basically divided this slide into two parts. One is the prior city incorporation, and the second, the, the things that took place after the city's incorporation. As I mentioned, before the city was incorporated in 2006, the building was vacant. The owner at that time renovated the store, which included, included electrical, plumbing, septic, and flooring issues. The porch was also added before the incorporation. Talking about after incorporation, in March of 2007, the business owner applied for the business license. The city denied the business license. The property owner requested a rezoning from AG1 to C1 in 2007, and after some time, the owner withdrew that application. The City of Milton adopted the city Historic Preservation Ordinance in 2010. The Historic District was created and adopted by the City Council in December of 2011. Owner applied to rezone the property from AG1 to C1 again in 2012, but they again withdrew. And in, in January of 2012, they applied for rezoning to Historic District. The structure was designated as historic by the city in August, on August 20, 2012. So currently, correct me, Robin, there is only one parcel which is zoned as historic, and there are two structures in the City of Milton which are designated as historic structures. Right? Owner applied to rezone from AG1 to H to operate a general store in September of 2012. As requirement of the Historic District, the proposed historic use shall be limited to those historic structures identified on the subject property and may not be expanded. The mayor and the city council approved the request in February of 2013 with very specific conditions that were put on this property. So the request which we have in front of us today is to build additional parking and associate additional parking and to basically reduce the buffer spaces which you will be seeing on the site plan very soon. Along with this, the applicant is also requesting a concurrent variance to be, so initially, the concurrent variance is to allow the application for certificate of appropriateness application to be considered for the Design Review Board in place of the Historic Preservation Commission. So generally, the certificate of appropriateness applications are reviewed and heard by the Historic Preservation Commission, but they're requested, they're requesting a hearing in front of the DRB. CZIM meetings, public participation process. A CZIM meeting took place on January 28, 2020. Five community members attended this meeting. Overall, it was positive, some good questions came up. The public wanted to gain a better understanding of what was being proposed on the site. The applicant and the staff explained the issues and the process. Overall, it was a very positive meeting. Now coming to the requests. You want to take over from this?
So there is a total of five requests for the zoning modification, so I'm just going to walk through them with you. And at the end, if you have any questions, please feel free to ask that. The first modification request would be to modify the site plan that was approved back in 2013, well, it was 2013, and it was a revision 2000, of January 9, 2013. So this was the site plan that was approved by the City Council. This is the revised site plan that the applicant is requesting to replace with the original site plan, and I'll walk through different aspects of it with you. So the, one of the requests is to add 23 additional parking spaces. 19 of those are located to the west of the building and south of Thompson Road, which, thank you to Shuba and her staff, she did an awesome job of making this a little bit more understandable. So here are the 19 spaces that abut the AG1 property that's to the south. It's also under the same ownership, but is zoned AG1. There are four additional parking spaces right here that they're wanting to do parallel against the property line. And then those proposed parking spaces will be required to be gravel or other pervious parking material, and the applicant is aware of this and is planning to go in that direction. As far as the recommendations, it is in the city's and the community's best interest to help ensure the viability and physical condition of one of only two designated historic buildings within the city. Although the applicant is requesting the deletion of the 10-foot landscape strip and 10-foot parking setback in order to construct additional gravel, gravel parking, the property zoned AG1 to the south is owned by the same property owner and will be sold along with the .52-acre store site. The applicant is providing a 10-foot landscape strip along Thompson Road to provide partial screening to the proposed parking. Staff notes that the 20-foot drive aisle between the parking spaces and the landscape strip along Thompson Road will only accommodate a one-way drive aisle with the 90-degree parking configuration. So, right now, they were looking at it as two-way, but based on our code, would require to be one-way. The City of Milton will be constructing a new roundabout at the intersection of Hopewell and Thompson Roads that will be more aligned with the eastern leg of Thompson Road. The design of the roundabout will allow the easterly entrance exit on Thompson Road to access the roundabout, and I'll show you an exhibit in a second. Construction on roundabout is projected to begin in spring 2020. So here we have, this is a, a construction drawing of the proposed roundabout. This is the property that's before you, right here. This is the H-zoned area, and this is the AG1, and they, to be sold together. And as you can see, there's a gap. This would, area that's white in between the road and the property would be the right of way of the city at this point in time. Based on these issues relating to preserving the historic designated building and applicant providing a sensible land plan to assist in the successful operation of a new general store, staff recommends that condition 2A be approved as requested by the applicant. So, we just dealt with that general site plan replacement, okay? That was the first item request. The second item is 3A, is to delete the 40-foot buffer, and I'll show you that in this slide here. So here in the orange-red, we have the 40-foot buffer area that was required under the 2013 approval. And so the applicant is requesting to delete it to allow the parking, new parking to be constructed. And they are proposing to keep the 10-foot landscape strip that is adjoining it along Thompson Road. So basically, based on the other issues I spoke about earlier on the first request, these issues relating to preserving the historic designated building and the applicant providing a sensible land plan to assist in the successful operation of a new general store, staff recommends that condition 3A be approved as requested by the applicant. Onto request number three. 3B is to delete the landscape strip. And you're like, what landscape strip? And I'll show you. Anyway, it's all very convoluted, but here we go. Is the green, is this landscape strip adjacent to the AG1? Is, they're asking to delete it to provide four additional parking spaces. And again, staff recommends approval of this condition based on the issues that we, points we brought up previously. Request number four is to provide a 10-foot setback for parking adjacent to the residentially used property along the south property line. So they want to delete that because they need that setback for the cars, for their parking. So again, here in the diagram, it shows the 10-foot parking setback, which basically was a 10-foot landscape strip as well. And again, staff is recommending approval, but we're adding a couple of conditions to this. Staff notes that it is necessary, if this request is approved, to install an equestrian foreboard style fence at a maximum height of five feet adjacent to the south property lines in order to keep parking and other activities wholly within the H district. Secondly, in addition, wheelstop shall be installed in front of the newly created perpendicular parking spaces, and these improvements, recommendations will be included in the conditions of zoning. So based on these issues relating to preserving the historic designated building and applicant providing a sensible land plan to assist in the successful operation of a new general store, staff recommends condition 3C be approved, which is basically the deletion of that condition. The fifth and final zoning modification request is 3G. Basically, this is asking to replace the review of all improvements to the site. Structure and signs shall be reviewed by, and granted a certificate of appropriateness by the City of Milton Design Review Board instead of the Historic Preservation Commission. So the applicant is requesting this change and the review of what typically would be, what would be required of the HPC to the Design Review Board. The reason for this request is that the HPC is no longer active and is not able to conduct the required review. Although the exterior of the building will not be altered, if approved, the site will be reconfigured to provide additional parking, and therefore, a certificate of appropriateness will be required prior to the construction of the additional parking. Based on the fact that the HPC is no longer active, the proposed changes still, will still need to be approved. Since the DRB's purpose is consistent with HPC's purpose to review the built environment, staff recommends that proposed modification be approved to require the DRB to review the certificate of appropriateness, and therefore, staff recommends approval of condition 3G, which is request number five. So those are the, a bundle of modification requests. So, in the original zoning that was approved in 2013, there was a condition that we just spoke about. But in addition to that, the zoning ordinance requires a similar, it's really the same thing. And so the applicant is requesting the concurrent variance to allow application for certificate of appropriateness to be considered by the Design Review Board instead of the HPC. And so there's, anytime we look at variances or concurrent variances, there are four criteria to approve a variance. The first one is relief, if granted, would not offend the spirit or intent of this zoning ordinance. And as it applies to this situation, by allowing the DRB to consider a certificate of appropriateness instead of the HPC, would not offend the spirit or intent of the zoning ordinance based on the fact that both bodies were established to review the compliance of zoning, of this zoning ordinance as it relates to buildings and development plans as outlined in their respective codes. Secondly, there are such extraordinary and exceptional situations or conditions pertaining, pertaining to the particular piece of property that would, that the literal or strict application of the zoning ordinance would create an unnecessary hardship due to size, shape, or topography, or other extraordinary and exceptional situations or conditions not caused by the variance applicant. And in this consideration, staff states that since creation, since the creation of the Historic Preservation Ordinance and HPC in 2010, and the approval of RZ 1215, the HPC is no longer a working commission. By allowing the DRB to review the certificate of appropriateness, the proposed changes to the site can be achieved. With the abandonment of the HPC, it has caused an exceptional situation not caused by the applicant. And thirdly, relief, if granted, would not cause a substantial detriment to the public good and surrounding properties. And by allowing the DRB to review the certificate of appropriateness instead of the HPC, would not cause a substantial detriment to the public good and surrounding properties. And lastly, by allowing the DRB to review the certificate of appropriateness instead of the HPC, the public's safety, health, and welfare are secured, and that substantial justice is done. And therefore, staff recommends approval conditional of VC 20-02 by the applicant. Based on the evaluation of the requested zoning modifications, those five requests that we went over, and the concurrent variance, staff recommends approval conditional of requests one through five of ZM 20-02 and VC 20-02. And so, here are the recommended conditions if you all decide to vote on that. 2A is to replace the site plan with this revised site plan submitted on December 23rd, 2019. Condition 3D to delete the 40-foot buffer, which has various dimensions along that property line, and that the 10-foot landscape strip would remain along Thompson Road. To delete in its entirety, condition 3E, which is the 10-foot landscape strip adjacent to portions of the south property line. And then 3F to delete the 10-foot setback for parking, so that condition would be totally deleted. 3G is to replace the review of the certificate of appropriateness by the Design Review Board in lieu of the HPC. And then, this is I, 3I is to allow application for certificate of appropriateness to be considered by the Design Review Board instead of the HPC, which is, relates to the concurrent variance VC 20-02. And then these are the two additional conditions that I added based on the adjacent parking to the- to the AG1, is to install an equestrian floorboard-style fence at a maximum height of five feet adjacent to property zoned AG1 along the south property lines of the subject site zoned H district. And lastly, K, to install wheel stops for all newly-constructed perpendicular parking spaces adjacent to the same property line, referenced above. And so that is our staff report, and so we'll be happy to answer any questions before the applicant comes.
Are there any questions? Were we getting to a public comment in here? Obviously, you can ask questions at any point, but is there anything right now?
I'll hold.
Okay.
I'll wait.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Robin.
Mm-hmm.
All right, I'll open up to public comment. Suti, do you have, I believe, procedureally, we would go with those speaking in support.
I only have comments in support.
Okay.
So the first.
Who's calling the first?
First individual is Chris Sedgwick.
My name is Chris Sedgwick. I live in Milton at 13050 Battery Road, and I'm excited to go ahead and get started on this project. This has been an interesting little site. Everybody pretty much is aware of, of the site. I was interested in it 15 years ago, and I know there's a lot of interest in the site. It's very restrictive use, and actually, the size of the site has been tricky to go ahead and try to go ahead and make something work there. But I think ultimately, we want to go ahead and be able to renovate inside and make it a neat place for people to come and, and visit. So I have my partner here with me today, Josh Kim, and, and if you have any questions about what we'd like to do over there, we, we intend to do homemade donuts that are cooked to order, coffee, gelato, have some local, local items there as well, too. But it's a small place. We'll have 28 seats inside, and we'll be producing everything on-site, so.
All right. Thank you, sir. And then certainly, questions could be asked later, but right now, it won't take up your public comment time. All right, Suti, if you'd please call the next speaker.
Next speaker is Josh Kim.
Mayor Council, good evening. Thank you for your time. Just wanted to mention that.
Josh Kim, would you mind just state your name and address, just so it's on the record?
Oh, thank you so much. Joshua Kim, live on 2314 Commerce Street in Alpharetta. Chris introduced me to Milton, fell in love with the beautiful city you guys have here, and I think it's a very, like you said, interesting project. I work with commercial real estate. We transact on, in 48 states, all of the country, and so looking at this deal, it looks like the parking is, was restrictive, and I think if we can get the spots we need, we would do something very interesting. We're focusing, as Chris mentioned, on homemade goods that are free of artificial flavors, and we really look forward to doing something good for the community in terms of school programs as well. So actively engaging in being a part of it. And so just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Suti, if you'd please call the next speaker.
That's all we have.
Okay. At this point, then, I will close the public hearing with all the public speakers we've had, and open up for questions or comments from council. Laura?
Couple of comments for staff. Thank you for the arrows. That was great. On the 10-foot landscape strip off of Thompson, so that's where, you know, the, there's nearby residences, so how, you know, I didn't see a landscape plan. What, what do you envision for that?
I mean, it's a matter of, we have specific requirements in the zoning ordinance, what a landscape strip would consist of. It's basically trees with some shrubs, you know, intertwined with the street trees, so that's, we do have a defined what is required of what a landscape strip is, so.
Okay, so and there's, there's no fence along that, on that side?
If, if they want to do a fence, they can. If you want to make that a requirement.
I'm just trying to get a visual for what that's going to look like, because that's where the residences are that are in such close proximity to this. You know, as they come in, you know, I think that landscape, I'm all for it. I just want to make sure that it's a nice, you know, robust, but I know that there's also line of sight issues as well, right?
Correct.
You have to be able to see the traffic. So that's, that was one of my questions, and just that buffer on the westmost side, is there, I mean, I, that's, there's a house right there. It's currently for sale, so that's another area that I would just want to encourage some buffering with, with plantings. Also, the floorboard fence would go behind the wheel stops on that?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
As I just mentioned, this property is a split zone. So again, you can see a line on the map, but you cannot see any line on the ground. So a fence and the wheel stops will just make that differentiation between edge zoning and AG1, so that does not spill out onto AG1.
Right. Which I think is important, because we want to contain the, the parking on the historic site where the business is. Is there, is there lighting planned?
Is there a what?
Lighting.
Right now, we don't have a lighting plan, but if they do choose to have any type of lighting, it would have to meet the night sky ordinance, so.
And then, of course, access from Bell Memorial to the, the Hardeman Store is planned in our, in our roundabout, correct?
You can crosswalk. I'm not familiar enough to know whether, the details of the plan, but that's what I have heard, that they are.
Okay. So I would think that that would be real important, to make sure that from Bell Memorial, that we can, we could get people safely across that roundabout.
Anybody else? Rick? Karen?
Yeah, just to bridge off from what Laura had said, I think if we, when you look at that, the design of the, the roundabout, if there's a way to do a crosswalk or something to safely get people across, if we're going to allow pedestrian traffic, I think that would be important.
There's no pun intended on that comment either, just to bridge on what she said.
Both parcels are being sold together, correct? The H historic and the AG1?
Right, it's all one big package, yes.
Okay, so they're going together, and there's no longer, that house has been demolished that used to be to the south of that property.
Correct.
Have we done, ever done, like, zero lot line parking for any other structures abutting AG1?
I mean, typically, we do, like, in form-based code, we don't have any landscape strip if there happens to be parking adjacent to another property line, but as far as non-form-based code, we typically have minimum five-foot landscape strip, but that's what they're asking the variance for. But typically, it's five-foot commercial, against commercial and/or 10 feet, depending on the intensity of the, that was the traditional zoning of, traditional C1, different parcels adjacent to each other, there would be at least a five-foot landscape strip.
Yeah, I mean, I like the, I like what, what they're doing, I like the concept. Only question I had is, for the future, if that other parcel is sold, what, what does that do? I'm assuming the reason it's a zero lot line is because we're treating this as an independent parcel, and the AG1 as an independent parcel, even though they're going to be owned by the same, same party.
Correct.
Carol?
Well, gentlemen, first of all, congratulations. This sounds terrific. I'm not sure I've ever had any really natural food, other than like Baby Ruth and Butterfinger, which I thought was pretty natural, but, but I look forward to it. I may not have understood what Laura was, was asking. I understand the landscape strip, but on the other side of, of the parking bumps, or whatever you called it, parking stops, thank you, will there be landscaping on that other property to kind of break it up? Or is that just a vacant lot? I don't have a visual on that, so.
I think it's a vacant lot now, correct?
Yeah. I mean, we can't require that the other parcel have landscaping, because that's not the parcel that's in question at this point. You could ask the applicant, since if they would be purchasing it, what they might have plans for on the AG1 parcel.
And that would be these applicants that I could ask that, right?
Yeah.
And I guess the one comment I would say to that, typically, you wouldn't wa, make a decision that affects another existing property.
Yeah, I just mean light landscaping, just to.
Yeah, but what I, what I'm saying is, on this one, if they sell the other parcel, it's a known what's there, and that parcel, they could put the buffer, their landscape on, too, so.
Yeah. Okay, for your consideration.
So, but is, was there a que, did?
No, 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 I just, I was, I needed clarification, but if we could do something on the other side, or if you would, that might be nice, not a stipulation.
Okay.
I have some questions for the applicant.
Okay.
I was just interested in the hours of operation that you envisioned.
We're not completely sure, but I do believe it'd be probably eight in the morning till around five or six.
And any plans for, like, outside music, or, you know, PA system, or anything like that?
Not at this time.
No. And, and I had heard, or maybe it was in the staff report, that there might be plans for the AG1 portion? Do you, can you?
We don't have any plans for it right now.
And if, as far as the, you know, the house that's on the, on the westmost, that, that's what I'm concerned about, is when people come in, would you consider some landscaping there?
Sure. It, our parking kind of almost sits in the front yard, and it's very close to that, and that property is vacant right now, but.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem landscaping there. I did want to make a comment, too, that when the roundabout goes in, it's going to actually move Thompson Road further away from us. So even though we're requesting a 10-foot buffer, most of that property is going to go ahead and be further away than that, and it does create a green space, which, which I've been told by the city, it'll kind of like the previous discussion you had, it's going to create a piece of property the city's going to have to maintain, and it may be, we may be interested in purchasing that so we could maintain it. You know, we want it to look good. Right now, there's a little culvert out in front, and, and there also is, I've seen the plan for the roundabout, there is a, there is a walkway, because I know that, you know, a lot of people will probably want to walk up from the park, but the city's already figured that out, and, and they have a sidewalk plan to go ahead and get people across the road.
We definitely don't want kids, you know, dodging across that roundabout, but I think that would be, that's my biggest concern, is as the cars come in on that west entrance, and that is, that, that property is for sale, and I just want to make sure that we don't, you know, do anything that, that causes them some trouble, and y'all have been good about, you know, just some landscaping there that would help buffer that a little bit.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem with that.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Is it going to be Krispy Kreme or Dunkin' Donuts type?
They make great donuts, but no, something a little bit different. It's a very small space, so we, we intend to do something very, very limited. We'll have something classic, but we're going to do something that's a little, a little different, too.
Hey, you said it was healthy.
It's going to be a popular place.
It's going to be healthy.
I, I think this is a great idea to kind of, kind of preserve one of our historic structures, so looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, well, I'll, I'll open up for motion unless anybody has any other questions.
I just want to ask, Robin, how, how do I, what are, what's the proper way to say plantings on the west, you know, because I don't want to leave it open-ended, because he's graciously.
So I guess you, you might want to, I do believe there's already about a 10-foot strip that's on that western piece, so if you want.
Okay, so I didn't see that. And is it, is it, this strip is to be planted?
It's, they called it a landscape strip in their, let's see.
Yeah, if you can show it to me.
So if you see this right here, right here says landscape, they call it an island, but that's about 10 feet there, but if you want additional, you'd have to ask for it, and then.
No, I don't, I don't want additional. I just didn't understand what that was.
Yeah.
And that's, that's to be planted.
Right. I mean, you could say something like, provide a 10-foot landscape strip planted with, to be approved by the DRB or the, the city arborist, because if I just say landscape strip, it's not going to be a lot, but I don't want to say to buffer standards, because it's not wide enough to make, to buffer standards, but something to beef it up. But if you wanted, you know, to ask for another body, like the DRB or the city arborist to be involved, that would be fun.
So if we wanted the DRB to weigh in on that?
Right, to have approval by the DRB.
Okay.
And then we'll, we'll have Sandra, our arborist, kind of come up with a plan before it goes to DRB.
One thing I would add to that, or keep in mind, is, is also with engineering, too, because of, to make sure there's not blockage traffic line of sight, so.
Yeah.
Would need to weigh in.
Although if it's, if it's just entering, if it is just entering on that western portion, hopefully, that won't impact it too bad on that western entrance, but, let's see.
Okay.
Okay.
Clarification enough to assume you'd like to make a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve agenda item ZM 20-02 slash VC 20-02, with staff's recommended conditions, with the addition of the westernmost landscape strip to be approved by the DRB and Public Works.
Yeah. Make sure it's safe.
We know, so the 10-foot landscape strip on the west property line be, I, I was writing so.
On the west property line, per approval by the DRB?
Okay.
I think just to clarify, the landing strip is, the planning strip is there, it's just we want to have the DRB to approve it.
For, for the purpose of screening the residence, you know, the residence that's adjacent there?
Okay.
Second.
So, just to clarify, Ken, do we need, is that?
Say it again?
Well.
I'd like it to pour the records into the table, so I like it, even if with the second in place, just for taking statements.
Okay. Yeah, if you'll just repeat it, Laura, make sure.
So, staff recommended conditions with the westmost landscape strip to be approved for screening purposes by the DRB and Public Works.
Second.
Sorry to interrupt, so that was the acceptance of the recommendation from staff, the acceptance of the recommended conditions, as well as the.
The addition.
Yes. Then it's the, yeah. The planning strip is shown on the plan, part of it, but just to be approved by DRB and any engineering concern. So, all right, I have a motion for approval, as read by Councilmember Bentley, and have a second from Councilmember Morick. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That passes unanimously. I do want to make one comment. I think in 13 years, I don't think I've, we've ever had a zoning where I haven't heard one negative comment, anything from a citizen, only positive, and tonight, we only had positive comments. So again, I'll give credit to the situation, the structure of the property, staff's recommendations in their work, and the quality applicant, so congratulations. All right. Let's see. The rest of the zoning items we removed, our agenda, correct, Suti?
Correct.
All right, so we will move on to.
Business.
We don't have any items under unfinished business, so we'll move on to new business. We don't have any items under unfinished business, so we'll move on to new business. Sudi, if you'll please call the first item. I know we added an item, did we add that to the first, as the first item, that if you'd read that?
Under approval of agenda, this item was moved by motion and vote to new business. Approval of subdivision plats and revisions, Louis Renaud, landlot 184, 16530 Hopewell Road, minor plat, create three lots, 3.0 total acres, one lot per acre, agenda item number 20065.
Okay.
Mr. Prague.
So, thank you so much for the support and tapping the brakes on this because I think it got the attention of a couple council members because the, you know, the square footage down to the penny on the 43,560 square foot, three lots, which is all per code and that's, that's fine, except when you talk to the BZA committee and the chair, they're the ones that get some of the fallout when lots are subdivided to this degree of precision. And it's my understanding that it got staff's attention too, which appreciate you looking at it in more detail and that when we asked, it came back that the homes have to be, you know, oriented just so and they have to be this size. And so when things get that detailed, you know, an unknowing buyer, you know, if this property were to change hands, would maybe not know that. And that's why I just wanted to bring that to light as we get more and more pressure to, to subdivide to highest and best use. These things are going to come forward and I just, I would not be at all inclined to allow any variances because this is self-imposed, but this will probably go to the BZA. And so, you know, we have our minor plat process, which is supposed to be flexible, but now we kind of see it being flexible for a use that, you know, is not the vision of council. So those were my comments and I was just going to ask, Ken, if, you know, this parcel could be subdivided and conditioned to that site plan that was submitted, that was so, you know, precise with the houses being exactly oriented this way and this size, because if the parcel changes hands, we'll have homeowners that might not be very happy. Just a suggestion.
I think the point is while they meet the letter of the law with it and approved and they have the right to do that, you just want to make, make them aware that we're approving it per the letter of the law and that site plan, you know, if, if something changes, they may not be able to, they may not have, if they can't meet all those requirements, they may not have three lots.
They might not be able to fit a pool and, I mean, if we have, you know, there's just not going to be room to build your standard Milton, you know, nice estate. So I don't know how to do that, but I think it's worthy of discussing and I appreciate that.
Ken, anybody else comment, Rick?
I've got, I guess, a comment along the same line. Any house that goes on these, even though we, if we approve this as minor plat and like Laura talked about with the orientation of the home, still is going to require the same from a, from a septic field and all the other things, all those requirements are still going to be, because what I'd hate to see us do is then also have a new homeowner or developer come forward with a whole list of variances saying, oh, well, we, now we have a hardship, we have to, you know, change and we, otherwise we can't build to it. That's, I think, what you were getting at and that's my concern too when we're doing, when there's no flexibility, if there is any issue, I just want to make sure that we in fact would still hold to the standards that we require. And as far as building and septic fields, the whole, all the conditions so that we don't run into an issue of a lot of variances being requested because like Laura had said, this would be self-imposed hardship, this would not be, but a new, a new homeowner may see it as a hardship on them, but for this body, I wouldn't want to see us approving variances because we, we gave this approval for such close and tight standards to one acre minimum.
A couple of things, if I, if I can answer, so as Congressman O'Malley just mentioned, we had a good discussion with the applicant about the variance issue and they are aware that if they are looking for a variance, it will be a self-imposed hardship and the staff will not be supporting any variances on this.
Okay.
Second thing, they already have an approved site plan for the septic tank from the Fulton County. So that septic issue which you were mentioning, Councilmember Morick, they already have approval from the Fulton County on, based on the site plan which they have given it to us.
Okay.
May I ask a question? So is your conversation about not asking for variances, is that in writing?
No, it's not in writing. Again, they can ask for anything, except, again, they can always request anything, right? It is the BZA and the staff's...
I understand that, okay.
So I just want to make a couple of little comments about, I don't know if people realize, but with pools, it's a little bit more lax with our zoning ordinance. Pools and pool decks and equipment can be as close as 10 feet to the property line, okay? And it does need to be either next to the side or behind the house, it can't be in front of it. Also, just FYI, porches can encroach into the front and rear yards by 10 feet. So that kind of gives a little bit of wiggle room for people designing their houses, especially if they want kind of the country farm Milton look with a nice deep porch. It does allow the porch to encroach by 10 feet in the front and the rear. So I think that gives some flexibility also to the design and here's just, we have an example of footprints of houses that are fairly substantial on these three different lots and the setbacks that would be required for them. Also, we have on public roads, you can't exceed 20% impervious, so that would, I'm just giving you a little bit of, you know, information. So that would include the house, that would include the driveway, it would include any pool. I will say, it's not so much fitting a pool inside of the setbacks of that 10 feet and all the other issues. We have come into more issues with the pervia, impervious area exceeding 20% for public roads and then 25% for private roads. So just FYI, it's not necessarily the location of a house or swimming pool, but sometimes they put in these really big driveways that just blow out the impervious area, so. And this is what we have to deal with every day in major subdivisions because most subdivisions, and I'm sure you're aware of that, that they are literally one acre, 43560 square feet. And it is, you know, something that we try to warn the developers and the builders that if your clients start adding all these different impervious surfaces, that actually that, a lot of times, that's where they get hooked into trouble, so just FYI.
Thank you.
Okay.
So... I agree with Councilmember Bentley.
Thanks to everybody, good that, kind of given fair warning and...
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to address real quickly, Councilmember Bentley's question about the configuration of the units on the parcel, but most of my, what I was going to offer has been subsumed within Robin's and Prague's comments. Appreciate the sophistication candidly of the way y'all are approaching this. I just, the reason I was going to say no, or recommend no, was because I want to keep our corridors clean. We're in a subdivision process right now and I don't want us to blanch over into the building or the zoning issue, so conditions associated with subdivisions, that's not really where we need to camp out. As Prague correctly said, you know, anybody can ask for a variance for anything and that's where the City of Milton just needs to exercise sort of the discipline within its codes to say, not going to work here because this was something that you chose to do as opposed to, you know, had forced it upon you, so. Y'all have hit all these...
Thank you so much for the conversation. I know the BZA appreciates it too, so.
Okay, so procedurally now this item's up for us under new business, so we just take a motion.
That is correct, Mr. Mayor.
So I'll open up for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make motion that we approve agenda item number 20-065.
Okay.
Second?
I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Morick with a second from Councilmember Bentley. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, Sudi. Okay, Sudi, if you'd please call the next new business item.
Next item is consideration of a resolution approving the 2020 update for the Milton Local Emergency Operations Plan, agenda item number 20066, Mr. Matt Marietta.
What I bring before you tonight is an update for our emergency operations plan with a little bit of a brief overview of what that means. This will be the 2020 revision. The reason we have an emergency operations plan, first of all, city code 18-24 requires a disaster plan. There's also several plans required by FEMA and GMA for reimbursement if we had a disaster, including the Fulton County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan and so on. Technically, we are subsumed under, under the Fulton County Plan, but given that Fulton County has a million residents and we represent a unique piece of that county, it makes sense prudence-wise for Milton to have their own plan. The first edition of this was drafted in 2008 and approved by council and then in 2010, an update was approved. The reason for that update is because we went from having a mostly outsourced government model to a mostly in-house government model, so a lot of the language had to be rewritten. Both of those original plans were written based on the state and county model and the way those are drafted, they have something called emergency support functions. And those break down everything a government can do into little tiny pieces, including transportation, communications, public works and engineering, firefighting, emergency management, mass care, housing and human services, resource support, public health, energy, so on. So the purpose behind this is to try, that's an awful broad approach to, for the City of Milton to take when we don't have that many departments, to break it down into that many small pieces. So this update is trying to make it more applicable to our local jurisdiction than relying entirely on the models set up by the, by the federal and county plan. So in 2019, we began working on a revitalized emergency management program, which includes the local emergency operations plan and that's what that acronym LEOP means. Why do we need one? Well, since Milton's been in existence, we've had three declared disasters, including floods in 2009, a snow and ice event in 2014 and Hurricane Irma in 2017. And we applied for federal reimbursement on all three of those and received reimbursement in 2009 and 2017. The reason we didn't in 2014 is the disaster declaration was for an ice event, which is how it impacted most of the state and we got snow. So since all of our damage was in snow, we were excluded from, from getting reimbursement for that, but that was just the way that the disaster declaration was written by, at the federal level, not at the local level. We also use this for other large-scale events, including Snowmageddon in 2014. We had a EF1 tornado that traveled seven and a half miles through the city in 2014 and in 2011, we had a multi-day snow event that shut the city down. And then we have much smaller snow and ice events, we have annual severe weather issues and large community events. And a perfect example is the snow that we had recently and then the flooding that we had in December. Those don't quite rise to the level of the disaster declaration, but, but it strains our resources to the point that we, we use the emergency operations plan mindset to start channeling our resources where they're most needed. So the goals of this 2020 update is a Milton-specific written plan, as I mentioned earlier. The plan focuses more on the departments in the city and assigning them responsibilities rather than on that cookie cutter federal version that has 14 different emergency support functions. So the goal was to create a concise and usable document for police and fire, but also for non-emergency personnel. So when public works and community development and economic development, these other city departments get involved, it's something that is not put in public safety speak. You don't have to be used to dealing with police and fire terminology all the time to be able to understand it. The other part of this is to engage various city departments in the plan development process. In the past, it's largely been Matt sitting in his office, writing the plan and bringing it forth for approval and this one was a much more inclusive process, the entire city was engaged in it and I think we're going to have a better document as, as a result of that. And then also to build a foundation to have a more robust emergency management program and hopefully a more resilient city. The new plan consists of a base plan that goes through and looks at the hazards that we face in Milton, it defines basic roles and expectations of levels of government and so on. Annex A provides operations, emergency operations center guidelines, so it tells how we set up an EOC and what the different roles are in it. Annex B talks about public warning systems, including Code Red and the tornado sirens. Annex C looks at crisis communications. The Annex D is the department responsibilities, which has replaced the emergency support functions from the previous iterations of the plan. And then also a legislative annex, which is just the city code that applies to this plan. It also directs further planning for a support department policy, so finance and IT aren't mentioned in this plan directly, but they're a critical part of, of those other departments being able to do their job. So we're going to be involving them. Also a continuity of operations plan, which looks at how we continue to operate on a skeleton crew or if city hall burned down or something along those lines. A training plan to make sure everybody in the city that has a role has, has the proper training needed. And then also a pointed distribution plan for distributing medications or potentially emergency supplies if typical logistical chains get broken down. After we, after this plan is approved, if you approve it tonight, the next steps will be to use this to assess and increase the training levels for public safety, but also for the other departments as well. To complete a COOP plan update, again, that's continuity of operations plan. And to conduct periodic tabletops, drills and exercises, much like the active shooter exercise that we had, we also had a tabletop exercise with senior staff a couple of months ago to try to engage them in this process. And we'll use that to assess the readiness of our program, identify any weaknesses and then prepare staff for response to low-frequency, high-risk events, things that we don't do very often, but could potentially have a huge impact on the city if we don't handle it properly. And also bring to light additional needs. And that's it, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about this.
If you guys have questions for Matt on this, it's interesting and thank you for everything you guys did. I mean, it's a lot of stuff that the average person doesn't think about or see to just, not only keep us safe, but ensure funding and meeting all the rules and requirements, so thank you, sir. If there's no questions, I'll open up for a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution approving the 2020 update for the Milton Local Emergency Operations Plan.
Second?
I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Bentley with a second from Councilmember Cookerly. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, Sudi, if you'd please call the next new business item.
Next item is consideration of a professional services agreement between the City of Milton and CPL Architects, Engineers, Landscape Architect and Surveyor, DPC, PC, for Crab Apple Streetscape Planning and Design, agenda item number 20067, Mr. Robert Jury.
Good evening, Mayor and council. It didn't take me long to realize that this particular project is very sensitive and a very high-profile project, which is why it's a separate item on the agenda as opposed to being on consent. This project started out as an in-house project, in-house design work and staff concurrently decided that we need to reach out to seek professional, outside professional services. First and foremost, it's imperative this finished product not only incorporates the Crab Apple vision, but also creates a safe environment for vehicles and pedestrians. I want to make sure that's clear. But the consultant's main objective and initial objective would be to involve the Crab Apple stakeholders. There are multiple tasks underneath this proposed agreement, including up to eight stakeholder meetings with the local owners around Crab Apple. And... stakeholder meetings with the, the local owners who own Crab Apple, and four coordination meetings with city staff, including community development and public works, and four Georgia DOT coordination meetings. So there's a lot involved in the planning and development of this concept plan, ultimately producing a concept for the Georgia DOT encroachment permit. So, it's going to be a live involvement, there will be multiple meetings, and we want to make sure this consultant takes the lead on that. Any questions?
Questions for Robert on this?
Got one quick one.
Go ahead.
What's the timeframe on this, Robert?
Well, we want to bring the consultant on as quickly as possible. The, the long pole in the tent, if I can use that phrase, is the DOT approval. That tends to drag on for months, so putting a fine, fine timetable is kind of difficult. But I think we can complete our work, no doubt, probably by the midsummer, something like that.
Anybody else? All right, we'll open up for a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve agenda item number 20-067.
Second.
I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Jameson with a second from Councilmember Mohrick. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
That's unanimous, Sudi. Thank you, Robert. All right, Sudi, if you'll please sound the final new business item.
Final item this evening, consideration of a resolution of the City of Milton opposing House Bill 523, redistrict, restricting local governments from prohibiting short-term rentals in residential districts. This is agenda item number 20068. I do have one public comment that they have requested me to read into the record. Do you want to hear that now?
Wrong without.
This is from Gary Jablonsky at 2680 Grassview Drive, Milton, Georgia, 3004. And he states, "I am in support of this resolution. I strongly recommend that each council member read and comprehend every word of the resolution. It is extremely important. Your vote today could set precedent for future votes and actions regarding House Bill 523." Mr. Ken Girard.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as you know, it is, we're in the middle of the legislative session downtown, and we have taken up for consideration House Bill 523. It is part of, there's actually a handful of bills right now that are pending in front of the General Assembly that express an intention by the General Assembly to preempt local governments on areas that I believe have historically been exclusively maintained and controlled by local governments, not only in the context of short-term rentals, but also with respect to architectural design as well. In fact, I just issued an opinion yesterday to another government where I felt like there were some constitutional issues with the suggested preemption of the architectural design standards as well. With respect to this, though, this is short-term rental. To me, this is fairly clear, this is problematic constitutionally. As the council is aware, the Georgia Constitution actually vests the power of zoning in cities and counties. It is not vested in the, in the General Assembly. And when I say that, it's important, because that means that the zoning power is not a conferred power by the General Assembly. It's a conferred power by the people of the state of Georgia. They have decided in their enlightened wisdom that cities and counties are best equipped to make land use decisions with respect to usage. The reason that's important is because short-term rental, however it may be presented, is a use within a zoning district. I mean, I can use my home to live in it, I can use my home to short-term rent it, or I could use my home for a grocery store, or I could use my home for a restaurant, or I could use my home for all variety of reasons. And it still looks like a home, but it's got a different use than a residential dwelling. And I believe that that ability to regulate uses in zones is uniquely zoning. And the ability of the General Assembly to take that power away from us, to be able to decide what zones can be used for what purposes, is significant, and therefore, under the notion that we need to remain vigilant, vigilant to maintain the powers that have been given to us by the people, this resolution would basically say to the local delegation to the city, of, the City of Milton's local delegation to the General Assembly, to say to fight this bill and hopefully defeat it, that if the City of Milton is concerned about it, the City of Milton believes it is constitutionally dubious, and the City of Milton believes that the zoning power needs to reside at the local level. And if you adopt this resolution, and upon execution by the mayor, I would give it to the city manager, who would then presumably give it to the members of our local delegation. Mr. Mayor, that's my presentation.
Okay, other questions for Ken on that?
Just a comment.
Okay.
I just want to thank Mr. Girard for putting that together, and I know we'll want to get that down to, to the dome as soon as possible, so thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Okay. All right, I'll open up for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve agenda item number 20-068, consideration of a resolution opposing House Bill 523.
Second.
I have a motion for approval, Councilmember Cookerly with a second from Councilmember Mohrick. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimous. Now we'll move on to reports. Is there anything the council wants to report on? Okay. And we'll move on to staff. Come on down, Robert.
Hello again. Public Works, a couple of things I want to bring to your attention. And first and foremost, is we've been managing a lot of rain, and I don't need to tell you that, I know you know it. It has definitely impacted our operations. We've had rain gauge out front of city hall a little over 22 inches since January 1st. Compared to last year, it was 9.3 inches. So, we've obviously seen quite a bit here in the City of Milton, and it's obviously impacted our roads and, and it's tested our stormwater system. The intersection of Batesville and Taylor Roads is substantially complete. That was the drainage project we put in. We have presented our annual stormwater permit report to EPD that had to be turned in in February. We should see some action, activity very soon for the demolition of the home at Thompson and Hopewell. You saw that on the agenda today, so we should see some action out there fairly quickly. I know that's an eyesore that wants to be removed quickly. We were, we opened bids last week, you'll see that in the council agenda, upcoming agenda for vegetation control at the Birmingham Park Trails. We are currently out to bid for some redoing our re, new janitorial contract, new janitorial services. That's out to bid now, and we are working on a road striping bid as well. Right-of-way permits, we issued 21 right-of-way permits for the month of February, and maintenance, we had a total of 122 work orders, and quite obviously, those were, a lot of those were impacted by the rains. We had 51 potholes just in the month of February, which significantly more. Usually we get 15, 18 a month, so they're popping up, as, as you well know. And we do appreciate you bringing those to our attention, because we can't see them all. We also had sign issues, we had 12 sign issues, 11 dead animals in, in February, stormwater issues again, as you would expect, tree issues, 10 of those, debris, trash, we had 10 work orders, and traffic signals and school flashes, three for the month of February. So, that concludes my report, I'm open for questions.
Any questions, Laura?
On the gravel roads, where are we with the maintenance? Are we staying on the schedule or, because I know they're probably taking a beating.
They did take a beating. We were able to get our first cycle in before a major part of, of the storm, the rains came through. They did take a beating. Structurally, they held out fairly well. Of course, they're gravel roads, they tend to move and wash out. We had some washouts, significant washouts on, on some of the gravel roads. But the problem is getting back onto them. Soon as we get back on, we get more rain. So, we're trying to find ourselves a nice window so we can just attack nothing but gravel roads. We're aware of them, and we are doing some patching and, and kind of mitigating immediate needs, but we need to get back in and do a second cycle.
Thank you.
Anybody else, Rick?
Are you finding the new, I know we changed to a new mix when we were doing like the repairs, are you finding that's holding up a little bit better as far as the way we're treating?
Are you referring to the gravel roads?
Right.
I don't have a whole lot of history on your, your, your previous gravel roads, but I know we put a lot of effort into it.
I believe we are seeing some, the, unfortunately, Robert came after the new mix.
Right.
So he has nothing to compare it to. I believe we're seeing a significant improvement with the new mix.
Good.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, sir.
Thank you very much.
All right. Chief Edgar. And I, I think the police department would like you to.
Speed that up, okay. I'll, I'll take care of that, Sergeant Mulley. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just a couple of quick updates. The departments, wellness, physicals begin this week, so each firefighter will receive a comprehensive medical physical. Our MDA boot drive begins on Friday, and we will be conducting that for the next, every other week for six weeks, so you'll see our firefighters out there on the street corners. And hydrant maintenance begins this month as well, so we will be touching nearly 3,000 fire hydrants in the city, doing flow tests, painting, putting blue markers down and all that stuff. And I was informed on Friday afternoon that ISO, the Insurance Services Office, will be out. They are going to review our fire department on July 16th, so we are in preparation of that. They will be looking at all our apparatus, our equipment, our station locations, staffing, training, fire dispatch, water hydrants, community risk reduction, and all our fire prevention activities. So we've got a lot of work ahead of us just to make sure that we are prepared for them when they're reviewed, because that could have an impact on some of our homeowners' policies as well as business insurance policies. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
On, on the ISO inspection, or visit, currently, are we at a one?
We are a two.
A two.
A two slash two X.
So.
The goal is one.
Possibly could help, or could, could benefit, or?
The, the new station?
Yeah.
Yes.
Inspection and all.
I spoke to them about that. I asked them actually if they would delay our review, allowing us to get that station online, but they said no. But they would take that into consideration as they do our, our, our review, so we'll see, and hopefully that will be in place. You know, it have enough of an impact that, but they did say we could ask them to come back. Once that station is up and running, they would come back and not wait another three to four years before they would do it, and they would come back and revisit that and give us a new evaluation.
Okay. Great. Anybody else?
Anybody else? Thank you.
All right, Sarah, last but not least.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. A few updates. First, I want to thank you for deferring the zoning modifications related to our alcohol ordinance, and I look forward to bringing those finalized documents to you, hopefully in April. We are also currently working with Save the Horses in Ken's office on an agreement to pasture horses on the land purchased with the Greenspace bond monies at Freemanville in Birmingham. And the horse has been delivered for the Mayfield Charlotte Roundabout. She is resting at the Public Works Storage Facility until we're ready to install her. And then we're working with our area developers to kick off Milton's 2020 Meet Me on Milton events, with the first one being a cornhole tournament on the green from 4:00 to 8:00 on Saturday, April 18th. Answer any questions, sir.
Any questions for Sarah?
And she is bronze, right?
Yes, she is.
Right now. She's only, she's only.
No, Millie.
She's wrapped up.
I just want to make sure she's not, she's not going.
All right.
Thank you.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
All right, so is there anything else? If not, that concludes our meeting, and I'll open for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.